Good evening. The time being seven o'clock PM. Christine Farmer seeks a special permit pursuant to Section 3.1.6, Table 3-1, Table of Uses, use groups L-10 and L-14, and Section 3.2.2 of the Code of the Town of Foxborough, Massachusetts, Chapter 275 zoning, to allow a large family daycare as an intensive home occupation at 29 Connie Drive in the R-40 Residential and Agricultural District and a Zone 3 Water Resource Protection Overlay District. Ms. Farmer, you want to come up a little closer?
Okay.
So, as you can see, there are four of us up here, and we all participate, but only Kim, Dave, and I will be voting. Okay? Tell us what you want to do.
Oh my God, I'm so nervous, I'm so sorry. So, I want to open a family childcare again. In 97 to 2006, I had a family childcare. Oh my God, I'm so nervous, I'm going to cry.
I don't know.
I'm sorry. Now I'm on TV, and people are going to see me.
Just one person.
Okay.
And he's the building commissioner, so he's harmless.
Okay. Sorry. I knew this was going to happen, I just told him, I'm like, "I'm going to cry, I'm going to cry."
Just relax. Hey, you're going to be all right, just through the thing, just like we said.
Okay.
Just take a deep breath.
Just breathe.
We don't bite.
Not so far away, anyway. So, I ended up closing my childcare business in 2006 due to certain circumstances going, you know, through personal stuff. I got my bachelor's degree in human development and with an early childhood education certificate. And so, I opted to go in and start working in early intervention. I have a real passion for working with children. Unfortunately, in 2014, I got injured at a home in early intervention and suffered a major concussion and was unable to go back to work for a couple of years. That kind of put a real damper on my career at that point in time, unable to really be able to express myself. I had to go to speech therapy for quite some time to be able to learn to be able to actually talk and form sentences in a clear coherent manner. So unfortunately, I wasn't able to go back to that job, and it was really tough for me to try seek out and find another job within this field. So, that being said, I kind of took some minor jobs here and there, worked for Amazon for a while, and got injured there unfortunately, and again, was out of work for a while, and then I put myself through getting a certificate in lobotomy, thinking that, you know, with my injury, it would be something that I could do, I didn't have to think a whole lot, and I really enjoyed that time. And I was working at Norwood Hospital up until it closed last year, unfortunately. And that being said, not being able to find a job again within that field, Jim, my boyfriend, who I live with, you know, we were talking last fall, and just kind of, what am I going to do in my career path? And every time I spoke to him about, you know, my former life, and, you know, the career that I had chosen with working with kids, he realized how passionate I am and how much I really enjoy that. And to me, it's not work. And he's always saying, "Oh, it's so much work, this is the easy part, this stuff is the easy part." And I'm like, "No, it's not. No child would ever see me cry because I'm nervous talking to them." So, you know, we talked, and I, you know, just really described to him about the, you know, the ins and outs of what childcare is really like, and especially in your home, and, you know, the guidelines here state that, you know, you can have 40% of your home can be, you know, your childcare business. The way that the family childcare works is not a standard business. Unfortunately, you can't define a specific area because I'm going to have to be licensed throughout my home, aside from my bedrooms, where there would be no reason for a child to have to go into those rooms. But my, you know, I will have the basement licensed in case a little one has to wander, you know, wherever, I will have my, my first floor will be licensed, as well as my kitchen and stuff, because the children need access to be able to get out of any doorway that we have, you know, in case of emergency. So, I personally don't have children or young children, mine are grown. I actually started my family childcare unlike most people who started. I started it way before I even had children, and if I think that this is a hoop that I have to jump through, you should have seen what I had to do to actually get my license way back then. Because I didn't have a degree, and my only experience was really being a nanny, working for a couple of childcare centers and stuff like that. Because I wasn't a parent, this was something that was unprecedented. And so, I had to have many, many people speak on my behalf to be able to run a family childcare provider, or be a family childcare provider. It was a great place, I lived on Main Street, and we were able to get a circular driveway. It doesn't seem like at that time that there were these guidelines or bylaws, or nobody told me that there were, otherwise, I might have had to go through this as well. I know that, you know, one of the things that is very concerning to people is the traffic and how much I could possibly have within this neighborhood. It's a very quiet neighborhood, and being home now, I can see, you know, how many people go by all the time, it's very, very quiet, and I know that there would be a slight impact on that. But in my experience with what I've had in the past, I know that I would be able to work this out. I think that in the thing that I wrote to you guys as far as the traffic flow, most parents are staggering throughout the morning to come in and out. I would say that more often, it was the afternoon that I might have had a little bit of an overlap where there might have been more like three people picking up at one time. But very rarely did I have all of the children leaving all at once where I had a completely full driveway. So as far as like traffic is concerned, I'm willing to say, you know, ask parents to be able to come in one way and leave another, so that the flow is kind of, you know, not really backing up, or not everybody would have to be impacted on that particular one, in that particular road, anyway. Let's see what else. You know, one of the things that is a consideration for me is the number of children who do need care and quality care at this point in time. There are six family childcare providers servicing up to 56 children in the town of Foxborough. There are five centers, and there are two preschools. One of the things about family childcare is that it can service mixed age groups, so that a family can bring in their infant as well as their three-year-old, and they can have, it's more of a family-type atmosphere, where those two children or possibly three siblings are all in together and learning and growing. Many families want that versus having to go to a center where their children are kind of separated. Other families want that center. So, you know, there's a lot of different things and reasons why somebody would choose a family childcare. I know that when something was presented to me about, you know, the septic and the impact of the environment and stuff like that, and one of the things that, we are avid, avid recyclers, we compost everything, so our trash and our recycling is very minimal in comparison to other people's, you know, homes. So I don't see that this is going to be a huge impact as far as like waste management or anything that's going to happen within the environment. I'm going to do everything I possibly can to continue to make sure that there is no impact on that. We are very organic and environmentally friendly, so I'm not worried about, you know, putting harsh chemicals with, you know, in our town. I guess that's about it.
So, we're going to ask you some questions.
Okay.
And some of the questions that I'm sure we'll ask you are of things that you've stated in the material that you provided to us, but your neighbors perhaps have not seen this or are aware of it.
Okay.
Numbers of children you anticipate, let me use the word handling, it's not handling, it's not the right word, but handling at one time, and ages. And in addition to that, times and days that you'll be operating.
So, I presented to you guys, typically, family childcare is from birth to age five, and it can go up to a school-aged child, I think is considered up to the age of 12. There are three different types of childcare people can have or licenses. So, the first one would be a small, which is up to six children. The second one is a small plus two, which is six children with two children being the age of being in school, so anybody who's kindergarten on up. And then there's the large family, which is birth to, again, you know, any number. But with that being said, then I would have to have somebody working for me or with me anything past that six plus two. So if I had, say, six, sorry, seven children who were under the age of five, I would have to have somebody working for me. My intention right now is to not have anybody working for us. My intention is really to kind of start small. We know what our environment is set up for, and we don't want to jump into anything that maybe our environment can't handle. And I also know the way that this works is, I'm not going to have 10 children knocking on my door.
So if you're just going to have six children.
Mm-hmm.
It'll just be you?
Yes.
So you won't have anybody else, you're not going to employ anybody else?
No.
Okay.
But I could also have six children plus two school-aged children.
That was the next question. So you could have somebody who's just a day or two old.
Yes.
And somebody who's in second or third grade.
Yes.
But the second or third grader would probably be after school or days that there is no school.
Correct.
Okay.
Let's see, in terms of the timeframe, I'm anticipating opening no earlier than 7:45. When I did it in the past, I was open at eight and I closed at five. I moved those timeframes based on a few of the families that I took care of, and really the impact was 15 minutes before and 15 minutes afterwards. Majority of the families that I had were, you know, two, a mom and a dad working, one dropped off in the morning and the other picked up, so it kind of seemed like it worked really well for them, that my hours were not late. I don't anticipate ever working 7 to 6 o'clock, with the exception of sometimes people get caught in traffic, or, you know, something happens, they've, you know, plane delay, there are, you know, somebody had a baby once. So, you know, there are, you know, multiple reasons why there might be a later timeframe, but that would be very rare where I would say that somebody would be picking them up past, you know, 5:15, 5:30. So that's my intention is to keeping it, you know, within working hours.
So we're talking 7:45 to 5:15, 5:30, is normal?
Yes.
Thanks.
That would be typical.
Five days.
Five days a week, no weekends, no nights.
So let's just say for argument's sake, you start at 7:45.
Okay.
You have three people driving up to drop children off at 7:45, where would they be parking? I mean, I've driven by your house.
Okay.
So I know you have a long driveway.
Yes.
Would you direct them to park in the driveway to drop the children off, or on the street?
Yep.
How would you do it?
So, when I did it in the past, I, before I started, before we had our rounded driveway, we kind of had a traffic flow pattern where, you know, parents knew kind of how to stagger their cars, where they could get in and out if somebody pulled up behind them. So we're going to be doing that same thing, where I would be like, you know, this, and actually hand them a map, you know, this is how we're mapping out our driveway and our parking, because a lot of people will come in, and one person is flying in and flying out, where somebody else needs to maybe talk to me for a little bit longer, so that somebody who needs to talk maybe longer would, might be parked behind that person. So I know that one of the things was that they were not allowed to park on the drive, or on the sidewalk, sorry, the road, not the sidewalk. And, you know, so again, I would just be asking them not to. I mean, there might be an extreme emergency where somebody might have to, but, you know, that would be pretty rare, I would find.
And entry will be through the front door?
Yes. At this time, this is what we're planning, is entry through the front door.
Okay.
And there will not be a sign, I'm not sure I even wrote that in there, but I know that was one of the questions that came up.
Yeah.
So there will not be a sign outside.
So, just help me compare a little bit. When you were way back when on Main Street, Main Street, Foxborough?
Yes.
That was, and how big were you then, how many?
I had 10 kids.
10, so a little less, a little more than what we're talking about here.
Yes.
Now, was it just you then, too?
Nope, I had, throughout the time, I had anywhere from one to two employees, depending on just kind of the children. You know, there was one point in time where I had three infants, one of them being mine, and two of them being two parents, we all had them really within like very few months within. So I had hired, you know, a second person, there were three of us working, where I have, you know, a few toddlers, a few preschoolers, and a few infants, I kind of felt like, you know, we needed to give them a little bit more attention.
It's been a while since we've done one of these, but I remember, it seems like at one time, there was some ratios that determined staff.
Yes.
And it sounds like they're different now, because you can be, what, up to six? Six?
So the six has always been, for as long as I've known, that six has been the cap for one person. It wasn't, it was in 1998 that they changed it to a large family license, where somebody could take up to 10. Again, that was another hurdle that I had to jump through, because I had just opened my daycare, and I had gotten pregnant, and was going to have my son, and I had two other families that were also within. So I had to, you know, apply to EEC and say, you know, this is what's going on, I have the potential to lose these, and at that point in time, it was the third sibling of one of my families and a second sibling of another. So that would have been that many children that I would have lost, and that parents would have had to go out and find, you know, alternate care. So the ratio of one to six has been around for, I mean, for years upon years. The two plus eight changed right around the 98 timeframe as well, but that two, that 10 changed then, but it's the 10 with the two providers.
And at that point, you would need, what have you, an assistant?
An assistant.
And the assistant would either have to be licensed or approved by?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
I assume that your daycare center would also be subject to some inspections, I don't know if it's from the town, or if it's from some agency?
So...
To make things, make sure things are good, whatever.
Yes. So, the EEC, which is the Department of Early Childhood Education and Care, they will come out and they will do a comprehensive inspection of my home. It's probably like no inspection you've ever seen. I mean, they will go through every single outlet and make sure everything is covered appropriately. They will look through every single drawer in my house, it has to either be locked if there's something sharp in there. They, I mean, it's pretty comprehensive when it comes to what they're doing. One of the things that we need to do is to put a handrail up where our bulkhead is in case that's our, an emergency exit, just to make it more safe for them. One of the things that we did talk about, because most bulkheads have that great big jump, well, if you're two and you have little legs that are this big, it's very hard to step up and over. So we're trying to figure out different ways to, you know, accommodate those kids for that, just to make it a little bit more safe for them.
Obviously, you want to use rooms in the house, warm weather like today, outside? Are you planning on having that ability?
Absolutely.
Okay. Does EEC require the yard to be fenced?
Not my yard, because I am not on a Main Street. When I was on Main Street and opened it, I had a fenced-in backyard specifically for them. So I won't have to have a fence for this.
Okay. Kim, well, Ray, you guys have been quiet, so...
I was curious about the employees, but got that question answered. So staggering the parking, you know, I drove by and looked at it all, so it looked like you could fit a good number of cars in there.
Yes.
How would you picture working out when somebody does have to do a quick run and they get bottled, like, how do you, how do you manage that, really? Do you have them drive all over your lawn to get out, like, if someone really has to get out that fast?
I don't anticipate having more than two or three cars in my driveway at once.
At any time.
Again, like I said, like, the max number that I had of cars during the day, and I'm talking like, you know, the spread out, parents, five cars came in the morning to drop their children off, and five cars came at night to pick them up, because, again, I had multiple, you know, children in the homes. And they didn't all come at, I mean...
Same time.
Possibly, like, I remember having like three in my driveway at once, that was, that was the max. And like I said, we all kind of, just the way we were able to stagger it, it was very easy for them to get in and out of my yard. So I would do that. There are other things that I could, you know, potentially say to parents, you know, we have specific times when a child does sign up, there is a, you know, they sign up for a specific timeframe. So many parents will write from nine to five, or, you know, they're from 8:30 to five, or 8:30 to 4:30, or something like that. So there will be a lot of, you know, staggering in that manner.
Also, I just want to congratulate you on your recovery from your head injury, because I know what that's like, and it's, you're doing great.
Thank you.
You've been through a lot.
Yeah, you have.
So in your write-up, you indicated you were applying to be relicensed for a large family.
Yes.
But yet, you're not going to do large family, correct?
So, I am not doing large family at this time.
Okay.
So Jim and I have talked about, and I, this is why we actually came to the town and had no idea that I needed to come to the town in the first place, until I was talking to a real estate agent. So prior to the housing market going skyrocketing, we were looking at homes around town that would have been better suited. Our dream is to have more land so that we can be more sustainable. Like I said, we are very organic, we now have 12 chickens, so that the children can go and get the eggs, and this is going to be a very natural place for them to be, in a very loving environment. You know, we're, we want to be able to have the land for these kids to be able to learn and grow and get a different feel than what most kids are getting now. If you go through anywhere in like a daycare center, you know, their playgrounds are relatively sterile, I guess, if you would. You know, there's not a whole lot of nature around where the kids can kind of walk around and, you know, play in the grass, or play in the trees, or whatever, that children typically do. So what we have, we've done a lot of clearing of some trees in our backyard, where we're going to have a beautiful playground, once we can find somebody to come and do the work. It's not going to be a horror show, it's going to be eloquently done, where it's going to be natural, and, you know, it's behind our house, most people aren't even going to see it. In terms of noise and what people will hear with the kids, I never had a problem with any of the neighbors prior to closing my daycare back in 2006, of anybody ever complaining of noise. Again, I kind of lived on a busy street, so there was probably more noise than the kids could make out there. But in terms of, you know, all of that, I think, I think we're going to do pretty good.
You've not applied for the license yet, correct?
I am just waiting for my medical form.
Okay.
From my doctor.
Okay.
So, and then I have, everything else is all set to go.
Okay.
They're waiting for me.
But again, what you're going to apply for is the large family license, even though at this point, you're not intending?
So, so what the large family license will do is give me flexibility, that if I decide that I want to take that school-aged child, I have two neighbors...
You don't have to reapply?
I don't have to reapply, it's just, it's already there.
Okay.
So it just makes it easier on me versus having to submit all of the paperwork again and do everything that they require.
Inspections and everything else, yeah.
Yes, exactly. And they do, they, they come out and inspect us, every three years you have to be relicensed, but they can come out and inspect us anytime, walk on our property, I mean, they could do it within six months. If there's ever a red flag, they can do it a lot sooner, but I have a pretty flawless record, so...
Kim, do you have any questions?
I do have a question about, I guess more for the board, so, but right now, we're still in.
Yeah.
Yes, so I can hold my question.
Okay.
But you have answered all the questions that I had, so thank you.
Okay.
Barry, any questions?
Yes.
No, 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 I'm asking Mr. Ringler.
No question.
Nothing? Okay, so what I'm going to do is allow questions and comments from the public, but I'm going to ask you to let us know your name and address.
My name's Arthur Coombs.
He has to go to the microphone.
Foxborough.
You have to come to the microphone, please?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Well, we can hear you, but, so the public can hear you.
The public, we don't know how many people could be watching, maybe thousands.
My name's Arthur Coombs, 35 Conne Drive, Foxborough, Mass. My problem is the house is sitting on a half-acre lot that you want us to put the daycare in, and a portion of that's sitting on wetlands in the rear, okay? If she's going to have a daycare center, and she's going to bring a lot of children in there, there's going to be a lot more usage of the septic system, and I don't believe the septic system is satisfactory to handle that kind of a log in there.
Can I comment?
As far, as far as the amount of children, she says six now, but it could go up to 24?
No.
No?
Never, never past 10.
No, never past 10, that's what she...
I see other daycares, and some of them have a lot of children in them.
There are different types, but...
Yeah, there are difference between residential daycare and the numbers, and those that aren't residential.
Okay.
So... The residential daycares aren't...
Should be limited to six children, is that correct?
Well, ultimately, again, let me see if I got it right, you can have 10?
Yes.
Ultimately, 10.
So she can have 10 children of different ages?
Mm-hmm, correct.
Up to a certain age, or?
Up to 12.
Up to 12, okay.
I think if you, if I understand the regulations correctly, if you were dealing with children who were disabled, you could have more, or is it a higher age?
Less.
Less?
So, a school-aged child that has a significant disability would count as one of my sixes, it wouldn't count as plus two.
Okay.
So if I have somebody who has, say, is highly autistic or something like that, they would count as that number. So I would only be able to have the six.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
All right.
So your bigger concern is about the ability of the septic system?
Yeah, I'd say the septic system, for one thing, and it's right on wetlands, the property, so...
So the, yes, well, let's, let's ask, because it's probably, you know how old your septic system is, what it was designed for?
Our septic is...
You got a helper back there?
It was on 2010, and she has the paperwork there, I think, don't you?
Right, so 2010, it's set up for 15...
Hundred gallons.
Hundred gallons. We get it pumped out once a year, because we're just like that, even though there's only two of us, and it doesn't need to be done. You know, we just feel like it's better for our septic to be done, and...
1,500 gallons, I think, does that anticipate four bed, up to four bedrooms, something like that?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Can Barry answer that?
That would be a border health question.
Barry, would, would the board of health play a role in this? Is there any, to your knowledge, any inspection?
They, they deal with the septic, and they have the authority on that. They'll be able to get those numbers proper.
Barney, if it helps, I used to do the water minutes.
Yeah.
Septic systems are based on bedrooms, right? So it's the number of bedrooms on the house, not the number of people.
Fifteen hundred for four bedrooms.
Well, he put a fifteen hundred when he moved in, or when he switched it in 2010. So, and we know that because we just had it pumped out again, and I had to, they asked me, is it a thousand or is it fifteen hundred? And it's fifteen hundred. So you can actually look on that piece of paper that I provided earlier. In fact, I could even give Arthur this, if this helps you.
So it's an eleven-year-old system, so I'm sure it was designed to title five requirements back then. Not one of these pre-existing.
Yeah.
School kinds of things that still exist in places. And you have it pumped out yearly, so I mean, there's nothing popping up in my head that there's going to be a problem with it. Certainly, if there were a problem, you would be required probably by the board of health to address it.
Right. And we actually spoke about that as well, is, I mean, if we have to pump it out more, then we would pump it out more. I actually never, ever had an issue at my prior residence, and I didn't realize I should have the septic pumped out as often as, as you should. And only did it every few years and never, ever had a problem with the backup or anything.
Well, depending where it was on Main Street, you may have been in town, so or two.
No, it was a septic, right, yeah. Yeah, because when we moved in, we had to have it title-five inspected and all that.
So that's.
I have notes for the questions.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions?
So can I just ask for one, one clarification, just to make sure? So there's, you said there's three different kinds of licenses that you can have. So the first is small, up to six. The second one is small plus-two, and the two is two school-aged children.
As well, yep.
In addition to the six. And then the large is birth to, and could you just explain the, the large?
So the large is, you can have ten children under the age of five, if you would like. If three of them need to be, okay, so, two of them can be infants, but, or three of them can be under the age of fifteen, as long as one of them is walking.
Fifteen months.
Fifteen months, yes, thank you. And the rest can be under the age of five, if you, if you want. Or, or you could have school-aged, there's, it's a mixed group. So really, it just kind of depends on what you want as far as like the age group is concerned. I'll be targeting the infants, toddlers, and preschoolers. You know, I, I did do some after-school care, but those were for clients who needed it, that I, they were already clients of mine. But it was very rare. So my passion is not after-school care. My passion is the younger children.
So large is up to ten, under the age of five, but it might be less than ten, depending on the particular mix?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I go for the ten and we end up buying a new house, again, the paperwork will be a little bit minimal in comparison to have to redoing every single thing. So they would just come in and inspect the house versus me having to.
Get qualifications and all that.
Right.
Let, let me ask you a couple of questions relative to the rooms in the house. So you've got, you're, you're in a raised ranch.
Yes.
It's like the mirror image of my house. Bay windows are on a different side. So your downstairs is where you principally want to do the childcare.
Yes.
And you have, according to the sketch, and thank you very much for bringing this in today, you do have a bathroom facility downstairs.
Yes.
Is the downstairs finished?
Yes.
So there's heat, water, lights?
Yes.
Regular ceiling size?
Regular ceilings.
What, what do you use the rooms for now?
A workout room for one of them, and the other one is an office slash man cave.
Okay.
Video games.
So the rooms that have been, been used for living purposes?
Yes, both of them have TVs, and one of them has a beautiful surround sound that we go in and, you know, have our date night. Because COVID, we couldn't go anywhere else. So, that's, so, yeah.
Okay, I'll explain why, why those questions when, when we talk, and maybe the same thing you were thinking.
So, one of the things, you know, like I said, when it comes to the business of a family childcare, it's a little bit different than, say, you know, I was doing, I don't know, sign business or something. I can't think of, like, you know, our graphic business, graphic designs, where I would have that set up specifically in one particular area, where a family childcare provider is, you know, like I said, I might have to bring the kids to the kitchen, and they would eat at my kitchen table. I might have them downstairs eating versus having to bring them upstairs. It's just, it's going to really depend, one, on the, the ability of the children, the ages. So it might be, you know, it might be easier for me just to bring them all upstairs and be able to facilitate a lunch or a snack or something. Or it might be easier for me just to keep them all down there and have everything ready to go.
Now, on the first floor, you have in parentheses, potential daycare area for the living room.
Yes.
Meaning?
Meaning, if we can't get the bulkhead situated, then I'm probably going to opt to have it upstairs.
As opposed to?
As opposed to downstairs, and we'll just have our living spaces downstairs.
I'm sorry, have what downstairs?
Our living space. So our living room, instead of it being upstairs as it is now, we would just put it downstairs.
You might move a bedroom downstairs too, or something? Well, maybe not. Not one word, Jim, just, do you leave the three bedrooms as is?
We'll leave the three bedrooms. I did, the smaller bedroom that you see right there across from the bathroom could potentially be where I might put an infant to sleep, or two infants, if I have it upstairs. I would have them license that room specifically to have them sleep. Just because if you can see that whole open floor plan, having an infant sleep when, you know, you have toddlers and preschoolers wandering around is not the best.
The, the utility areas, is that closed off by a wall from, from the, from, from this room and this room?
Yeah, so there's, so there's three doors there, if you can see the three little doors. So they're all, they're all enclosed. They all have their individual doors. So the kids would only have access to that if we're going out through the bulkhead as in an emergency exit. But that will have to be approved by the state in order for it to be used. Because let's just say there was an emergency, just say there was an emergency and I had to use that, and some child tripped and fell in, in that particular room. But if I wasn't licensed for that, then there would be some pretty significant ramifications.
So again, the bulkhead will only be used for emergency purposes?
Yes.
And it all depends on what the state says?
Well, it depends on if we can get it to my standards of safety, not necessarily state standards of safety. Because I always take into consideration that the child's legs are that big, and it's hard for them to step up. It's hard for me to do it, you know, you're, you're stepping up and over, and somebody's, you know, that much smaller than me. So it is not my favorite choice to exit, but I need, if I'm doing it in the basement, then I need to have a second way to get them out.
I, I know you have in a closed porch out back, but I guess, I gather that would just be on, off the first floor? There's nothing?
There's nothing under.
So there's no way of getting from?
No.
From down here to, to that, other than going up the stairs?
Right.
Okay. Any other questions? Barry, any other questions?
No questions.
Okay, when do we close the portion, the public portion?
I make a motion that we close the public portion of the meeting.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? You want to start? Because you said, you had something.
So I am just curious, are we discussing the total square footage of the house and versus the potential daycare, the daycare area? I know we have almost two different scenarios, whether they may end up being upstairs, or where they, they may be up and down. Are we going there?
Um, let's do it separately. So the bylaw says that the area devoted to home occupation can't exceed forty percent of the habitable floor area of the principal residence. The assessors' office says that the habitable floor area is one thousand twenty-eight feet. That does not take into account the downstairs, and that's why I asked if it was finished, what you use it for, because it obviously is habitable. Have the same issue, I don't want to say an issue, the same thing with my house. My, again, it's a raised ranch. My downstairs, even though there are two rooms that we use constantly, are not considered to be living area.
Okay.
Well, they're considered to be a living area by us, and I suspect and hope that if we ever sell the house, or when we sell the house, the next buyer will consider a living area as well. So I, I think that the habitable, habitable area is what's on the top floor, the one thousand twenty-eight feet, which itself may be, may be wrong, it may be more, it may be less, plus the two rooms downstairs. So let's add them up. So one thousand twenty-eight plus one nine eight plus two two one equals fourteen forty-seven. And again, she would be prohibited from using more than forty percent. Forty percent would be five seventy-eight point eight. One ninety-eight and two twenty-one, I think it's four nineteen?
Yep.
So she's under forty percent. Barry, do you disagree or agree as far as?
Yeah, I agree, hundred percent.
Okay.
I think she's fine on the forty percent issue. I think she's way under.
You know, I, I think even if, even if we were to go strictly by what the assessors' office says, which is one thousand twenty-eight square feet of habitable space, she's only about, I, I think in that case, forty percent of that is about four eleven. So she's only eight feet off. And I think, if I'm correct, when you measured this, you measured, you included the storage area in a closet as part of the square footage here?
I don't think so.
You don't think so? Tell me you did.
Sure, I did.
Because if, because, because storage here and closet are definitely not habitable area.
Okay.
So that would obviously reduce it. Did I answer at least one of those questions?
Yes, you did. Thank you.
Any thoughts on that, or?
No, I, I agree. Appetitions and all that.
Yep. And if she has to use the upstairs, it's even, even less, because that's only one hundred eighty-two square feet as far as the living area. And I, I think it recognizes, I think we should recognize, you may have to use the kitchen.
Yes.
If for some reason there's a problem with the bathroom downstairs and you have to take a child upstairs, you know, you're, you're using that area as well, that bathroom as well. But I think the major focus of your work would be, assuming the bulkhead issue was satisfied, the two rooms downstairs.
Correct. I am just reading through home occupation. Intensive.
Yep, you want to go through the list?
I'm just reading, sure. So, an intensive home occupation is permitted by special permit as set forth in the Table of Use Regulations in the principal residence or in an accessory building subject to the following standards. Number one, the business must not produce noise or other objectionable characteristics beyond the limits of the lot. Number two, the area devoted to the home occupation shall not exceed forty percent of the habitable floor area of the principal residence. Number three, necessary off-street parking shall be provided. Number four, no more than two persons, in addition to family members residing in the residence, may be employed within the principal residence or in an accessory building. Number five, storage of material or products outside of the principal residence is prohibited. And number six, the making of external structure alterations to the principal residence or an accessory building is prohibited.
But, ready for what I was thinking about?
Yeah, E nine?
Although, can I just say?
Go ahead.
This is really neither here nor there, but the next one is home occupation non-intensive, which is not what we're talking about. But number six made me laugh as I was reading after looking at your application. Routine deliveries of packages shall be less than seventy pounds. I was thinking, is there going to be a cutoff at seventy pounds for children? But this is not what we're talking about this evening. I just had a slight little ZPA, bit of humor.
I can't weigh more than that. So my question, when I started looking at the bylaw, is if you look at in the table of use, E nine, which says childcare center, and it's, yes is all the way across. And I'm thinking, at least in my mind, if you're gonna, it seems like intensive use should be something that would only come up if it was, the use was not already defined someplace else.
Well, childcare center would be, let me just think, what's the name of the one on Green Street?
The one on Green Street, yeah. Well, and there's a big one down on South Street, as far as I know, it's still there.
Right, I mean, the one that, that I can think of, because it's closest to my house, is in the show, is Shopping Plaza, there's one at the very end. And, and they're protected under the so-called Dover Amendment, which basically would say that we can't prohibit a childcare center, although we can impose reasonable regulations relative to dimensions and, you know, reasonable dimensional regulations, parking regulations. But, but then the state law also says that a town has to allow residential daycare facilities, but it can regulate them. And we regulate them by section L fourteen, which, is it L fourteen? Yeah, which says family daycare large or small. And that's what you're talking about?
Yes.
And that's, you know, that's my, I guess I would rather stay, I guess what I'll call it from is I'd rather stay away from the intensive use paragraph, if we could do it some other way.
Um, well, we, we couldn't do it by the childcare center law.
Okay.
Number one. And, and number two is, and I can go back three years, because I looked at the decision. We, we had a comparable decision, comparable application which we approved three years ago. It was the St. Joy matter on East Street, I think it was.
Oh, yes.
And that was also, came to us as an intensive home occupation under L fourteen. So we, we certainly have precedent for that. But, but again, when we're talking about a childcare center, we're talking about a facility.
Correct.
That would not be within the home.
Correct.
And Dave, the, is a definition, I think, of family daycare.
I was looking for that, I.
Family daycare, large or small, any private residence operating a facility is defined in Mass. General Law's chapter fifteen, D. Section one A.
Where are I at?
Come on.
Oh God, you got the state pages.
I gotta find my email.
What pages, huh? The definition?
Chapter eleven. So again, the, the references to section.
Thank you.
It, it's, the reference is to a state statute. And I'm looking, if I see if I still save that email.
Okay, so you're way out there, all right.
But when, when it talks about. But, when, when it talks about, Dave, when it's, in our bylaw, it says, we have family daycare, large or small, any private residence operating a facility is defined in Mass. General Law's Chapter fifteen D, Section one A. And that statute defines small daycare, I think it's small residential daycare and large residential daycare, as Ms. Farmer explained it.
Okay, well.
So, again, we regulate residential daycare facilities by requiring a special permit from the board, as a, you know, as an intensive home occupation. But we're prohibited from regulating, or from prohibiting, prohibited from prohibiting a daycare center, although we can impose parking regulations and, you know, dimensional regulations, which is why I think the one on South Street, we, we ultimately.
Yeah, well, that goes way backward. Um, I'm okay with whatever we can come up with, it's just, I get, I don't want us to kind of abuse the home intensive use and stuff, bringing things in, that it was really not intended for in the beginning.
Yeah.
And when I, when I see what, what I just pointed out, it almost sounds like somebody's could be as a matter of right, which is fine.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think so.
Well, it says yes, I mean.
Yeah, for, for a childcare center.
Yeah, so yes.
Barry and Paige and I sort of had that email discussion, because, you know, Paige Duncan, who's the town planning director, raised the, the question whether we could require a special permit, you know, for Ms. Farmer. And I think that, and I know, I, well, Barry, you, you and I spoke, you know, briefly about it, and I subsequently, after I sent the email, spoke with Paige, and I think we're all in agreement that.
Definition?
The answer is yes, she's required to get a special permit.
Okay. Correct. Primarily the Dover Amendment.
Sorry?
Yeah, 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 okay.
So, she's here, and, and she's correctly here.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Get into these side debates, I'm sure.
Yes, we just want to make sure that things are exactly defined as they need to be. So, so she's looking for a special permit, so when we look at ten point four, ten point four point two, the criteria for special permits, just looking at the, what we're, what we need to be considering, we have the consideration of each of the following when someone requests a special permit, that one community needs are served by the proposal. And you had said earlier that in Foxborough, there are six family daycares that can care for up to fifty-six children.
Correct.
Plus, there are centers, plus there are preschools. I'm sure there are many more than fifty-six children that would be in daycare in Foxborough. Also, number two is that another thing we have to have in consideration is the traffic flow and safety, including parking and loading, and you have addressed that, we could talk about if we're, if we believe what she said has been adequate. Number three is the adequacy of utilities and other public services. Number four, neighborhood character and social structures. Number five, impact on the natural environment. And six, potential economic and fiscal impact to the town, including impact on town services, tax base, and employment. So, these are the considerations they were keeping in mind as we're looking at your application.
Well, you'll definitely have one more person employed.
You, you want to comment on it?
Uh, so, I, I feel like she's addressed these. It certainly would seem that for, for family, my, my kids were in family daycare for many years, they are now in college, so we're beyond that now. But I certainly understand that, as you said, there, there is a need for family daycare, there are families that like the, the centers, and that's wonderful, but I certainly enjoyed my kids' years in, in family daycare. So, knowing that, I mean, that's kind of surprising, really, that in, in town, there's only availability for fifty-six kids, and I'm sure there's more kids than that that, you know, are in daycare. I'm perfectly satisfied with what she said about the traffic flow and the safety, you know, having her parents come in one way and go out the other. The driveway, I think, is, is adequate from what you've described. I also took a ride by, we generally do take a ride by to take a look. It appears adequate. I can't imagine that you would be using enough electricity to take down the electricity utility for, right, so I, I think the utilities are fine. The, the neighborhood is, does certainly appear to be quiet, you know, having kids playing outside in, in a yard seems like something that would happen.
Welcome to America.
In a neighborhood, you know, certainly. This is just my opinion, also, the, you know, the rest of the board members will be able to say what they want to. The impact on the environment, I'm not sure kids playing outside, or, you know, five extra cars coming in and out, or six extra cars coming in and out, because you will have siblings, you know, as you said.
Correct, yes.
Certainly. And I can only see this as a potential win for the, for the town, for a fiscal impact. So, that's my, that's my two cents.
Can I add something? There are a ton of children in our area as well. We see kids or parents walking with these young kids all the time, and in fact, somebody is putting their house up for sale on Walter Street, and I've bought a few toys from them, and she's like, I wish we weren't moving, because it would be so convenient for us to be right there. So, there is potential for me to have business right in my own little neighborhood. I mean, there's, I mean, countless, countless children, little kids that are there that we're probably seeing.
It's a big plus, if you're in the neighborhood, to the neighborhood, I'm sure.
Correct.
As long as they keep having them.
And people are going to continue to have them.
We won't have to worry about parking, right? Taking my motion, so.
Now, is there questions on that, or anything there?
No, thank you. I think all the criteria have been met. Thanks.
And I, I think all the intensive home occupation criteria met. I think we, the only one that I was really concerned with was the forty percent. I should say the only one I was concerned with, the only one that was causing me some questions was the forty percent. But I think all of the rest are, you know, fairly satisfied. You're not going to be making any external changes to the, to the house. It's not as if there's going to be, you know, again, if you're the only employee, it's not as if you're, you're violating or exceeding that, that criteria. Um, you know, again, it's, it's not as if you're creating a lot of noise, other than the, hopefully, the sounds of joy from children, you know, beyond, beyond the lot. You've got parking in the, you know, availability in the driveway, there's not going to be storage of materials outside, so I think you, you know, met that criteria. I do have a bunch of conditions to impose, which are comparable to what we've done in the past, so if you want me to read them, then we can make a motion. So, the first would be that the proposed daycare business is subject to licensure and all conditions and requirements of licensure, and to all conditions and requirements for the operation of a family daycare business that are imposed by the EEC. Second is that, subject to approval by, by the EEC, the portion of the residence in which the business is to be conducted is limited to the, the rooms that you've indicated. I think I will address the potential issue as a footnote, so that, you know, she would be allowed to utilize the upstairs as opposed to downstairs if the bulkhead issue can't be satisfied, okay? Three, conduct of the business is restricted to weekdays between the hours of seven forty-five AM and five thirty PM, with accommodation for the occasional arrival of children as early as seven AM and departure as late as six thirty PM. Four, not more than ten children may be provided childcare services in connection with the business at any single time. And, five, the business at all times is to comply with the intensive home occupation standards that are set forth in the bylaw. And six, the permit is specific to you, actually, I'm going to put, this is the first one, the permit's specific to you, and it can't be assigned, transferred, or conveyed by you to any other person, nor exercised by any other person who may own, lease, or reside in the residence.
Okay.
Okay? Anything else anybody can think of?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
Probably, we should put something in, I know it's Board of Health, but about the septic system being maintained, or pumped, or, um, I know you say you do it yearly now, pretty much, I mean, that's probably, if we said something like pump yearly, or more frequently if required by the Board of Health, or something like that.
We're pretty obsessive about it, and the last time we had it pumped, they kind of laughed and said, why? So, there's only two people, we, it's not like we have, I mean, my kids come to visit me, but.
Oh, you may not get a huge amount of volume with the, the age of these kids, too.
Correct, exactly.
I assume it's been a while, but I assume pampers are still a big item.
They are.
And, you know, just not going to be disposed of, as a matter of fact, you wouldn't even think of sending it down your septic system.
So, I can put, yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Should we put something in about, you had said you were not considering a sign, do we need to have a condition in there about a sign, or?
I didn't have a sign in my first place either.
Okay.
And we, we, we could add a condition. The, the signed by law allows you to have a sign that is not larger than three square feet in area, and not higher than six feet in height, has to be set back ten feet from the property line, and can't be illuminated. So, we could, we could certainly add a, you know, condition that, you know, if so desired, you know, signs shall comply with that, that requirement.
Okay.
You don't have to take us up on it.
Yeah.
No.
Because you have flexibility. But, but you would need to speak with Mr. Ringler about that, you know, before you do, do install a sign.
Okay, okay.
Anything else?
No, sounds, sounds good to me.
Motion?
All right, I would move that we grant the special use permit, subject to the conditions, special use permit for the family daycare center, right, subject to the conditions that we just discussed.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Opposed? Okay. So, Diana, you're on vacation next week, correct?
I am.
Is Gabby in, if I get this thing?
Yeah, Gabby and, Gabby and Paige will both be in.
Okay, so, with any kind of luck, I can have something prepared, and we can sign it next week.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, there's a twenty-day appeal period that starts to run from the date that the decision is filed with the town clerk. So, we'll sign it, it'll be filed with the town clerk, that kicks off a twenty-day appeal period, and you'll get notified of the fact that, that it has been filed. After that appeal period runs, you have to file this in the registry of deeds, up in Denham. You have to file our decision.
Okay.
Okay? It'll probably be.
What happens within that twenty-one days?
I'm sorry?
Can you say no? Within that twenty-one days, can somebody go back?
Somebody agreed by it can take us to court.
Yeah.
Okay.
Doesn't happen very often, but it.
It happens.
It happens.
Okay.
Doesn't sound like it usually happens if we have a room full of butters and people very, very unhappy about whatever it is we're doing, so.
Okay.
So, with any kind of luck, if we can get this sign by sometime next week, and then file with the town clerk, say by the end of the week, that's what, the twenty-ninth, twenty days would give you around July twenty-ninth?
Okay.
Plus or minus? Okay, I figure by the end of July.
But it's twenty calendar days, not twenty business days.
Twenty calendar days. Okay. Figure by the end of July, assuming nobody has appealed, you're set to file it with the registry of deeds, and then give Mr. Ringler a copy.
Great, thank you.
When I say give him a copy, after the, after the registrar has stamped it in, provide Mr. Ringler with a copy of, of that, okay?
Great, thank you.
If you have any questions, give Diana or Mr. Ringler a call. Okay, good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you so much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
You got to throw it, right? It was a big step.
I did, well, it was either cry or throw up, I didn't, you know, I figured.
Thanks for crying.
That's right. Thank you so much.
You're welcome, good luck.
Send your children to them, or your grandchildren, whichever one you have.
Thank you.
Please, no grandchildren.
Branch or elementary school next year.
Yeah, mine are, I'm at the first grade.
My oldest will be in third, and the two youngest are starting kindergarten.
Wow.
Uh, minutes?
Minutes, I got edits from Barney.
Do you have a question?
Don't we have to pay you a check for today?
No, you already gave me an application. You already gave me a fee.
I was trying to get more money, I don't know.
Well, no, no, it, it's to pay for the newspaper ad, but I won't get the bill till after July first, they only bill me once a month. So, I'll let you know how much it is.
Great, thank you so much.
Good night.
Good night.
So, we got minutes to approve?
Minutes, minutes, minutes. So, I had some small changes, but the most important was to spell Kim's name right.
Thank you.
What'd you do, spell it Jim or something like that?
She spelled the M-E-L-L-O in.
Oh, oh, the last name.
So, motion?
I'd move we approve the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay.
So, nothing for July?
Nothing for July, because the deadline was last month, I mean, last week.
Okay.
And I'm not here in August.
Uh, what day is August one?
August nineteenth. I think, no, we moved the September meeting.
September's going to be the end of the month.
Moved September to September thirtieth, I believe.
I'm pretty sure that's fine, because we went through this a few weeks ago.
Yeah, I think that we already went through all this, everybody's good for August, and we moved September to, September thirtieth.
Well, I will just double check, if there's a problem, I will let Kim know.
I might have a conflict for August, if nothing is set in stone.
If, if you have a conflict, and Dave has a conflict, we're going to have to move the August meeting, so.
Wait, you just said August eighth, sorry.
August nineteenth.
I'm pretty sure it's good, because we were going through the summer schedule stuff a while back.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm going to check.
Yeah, I will, I will check, I'm not a hundred percent sure.
I mean, people have till the twenty-ninth to apply.
Of July?
Of July.
Yeah.
It's a long time.
Yeah.
A lot of stuff could come in.
But we have, you know, from now until then, to figure.
So, like, can you indicate nobody's been snooping around, except for the guy?
No, Barry, that guy with the tattoo thing, that would be a special permit through the planning board, not the zoning board, if it's in the S one. Besides that, it's not allowed.
Yeah, it's a PB in the, on the table, table three ones, it's a, yep, that's right. That's only in the S one district.
Yeah.
And I don't even think he gave an address, right?
No.
He may have just been asking in general.
Has anybody else been around asking for anything, or?
Uh, we have, somebody unfortunately was asking for forgiveness after installing a foundation in the wrong spot. I don't know if you want to follow up with that, Diana?
Fairway Lane, do you guys know where Fairway Lane is?
Oh, yeah.
So, Tom Crossley at forty-three Fairway Lane subdivided his lot a couple of years ago, and the only way he could subdivide it was to do a one-lot subdivision, to get the frontage, because he didn't have the required frontage. So, they put in, Bill Buckley designed it, they put in a one-lot subdivision, right, with a cul-de-sac, and then they asked the planning board to waive all requirements of building the street, so no street trees, no sidewalks, no cul-de-sac, basically, it's a driveway. So, then, Jim Linehan is the person who bought it, and the guy, basically, they decided, well, that cul-de-sac thing's not going to be built, so we can just move the house to be closer to the driveway. And they put, so it's now in the setback, and they, and they want to be able to have that allowed, because they put in a twelve-foot foundation. And I said, planning board's not going to do it, zoning board's not going to do it.
You got a problem.
You can't create your own hardship. The guy called me up the other day, I tried to explain it to him again, I don't know if they just don't understand, he wants, they, they are under conservation in the back, and they've been to conservation twice, and the guy wants to come back to conservation again, because he wants to take down more trees. It's not going to happen, so, I don't know what else we could do to the, for this guy, or whatever, but, so, I guess you could let him apply, just so you guys could deny him, but you can't create your own hardship.
Have to apply, so.
Is it just the foundation thus far?
Just the foundation thus far, yes.
Not, I mean, just?
He doesn't have a building permit.
I don't know, you'd have to ask them.
He has, he has a foundation permit only.
He has a foundation permit, I guess. I guess it goes to stages.
Only foundation.
Yeah.
So, he's got nothing that lets him go up in terms of a permit.
Correct.
Right, because the foundation's in the wrong.
No, I, I get it, I get it.
He's been informed that it's just allowed.
No, I get it, I get it. Well, that's one thing, but if he goes up, then the whole house is in the wrong place, and that's worse.
So, he had, he had Bill Buckley's plan, and that was the approved plan from the planning board. He had somebody else submit the building plans, showing the footings in the wrong place. So, because that, I guess they just told this guy, it's based off the driveway, there was no cul-de-sac. So, that, that person wasn't from, wasn't from Foxborough, was an out-of-town person. So, they put it where they thought it could go, and that's where it was built. But that's not where it's supposed to go, because it's not a driveway, technically. It's a cul-de-sac. But they don't understand that it's a paper road. You still have to adhere to the paper road, even though it's not going to be built. I'm like, you know, because then he wants to know, well, is the town going to plow it?
Oh, really?
No. It's a private road.
Going to stop plowing driveways?
Yeah. So, so they don't, I don't know. I don't know how to make them understand it.
Probably doesn't want to.
Yeah. I'm like, you can build the road, if you want to build the road, and then have the town try to accept it. Then maybe they plow it. But as a driveway, no.
So, are you ready for another motion?
No, a couple of things. So, again, September will be meaning the end of the month.
Yeah.
We now have responsibility on signs, correct? There's no signed bylaw committee?
Right.
Correct?
Right.
So, I've got some signed bylaw revisions that are more administrative than, they're not substantive, they're really administrative. So, I think what I can do is, we can talk about them in September. And maybe, Lorraine, you and I can sit down with Bill Keegan before then and find out what the process would be.
Right, because I think it would have to go before AdCom.
At some point, but do we have to go before the Selectment before that?
Yeah, we'll find out.
Because we did that the last time, when there was the billboard committee. So, I'll be in touch with you about that. We can maybe set up a meeting with Keegan and find out what to do with that.
Okay.
And there's, there are some corrections in the rules and regs on comprehensive permits, so I'm making some changes on that. And we can talk about that later on. And when that's done, I will have made a mess of it all, of all the rules and regs.
Excellent.
And after that, we're going to silence you two on that forever.
And.
You can't get it done on that many tries. You're never going to get it done.
Other than that, I don't know. Anything else going on?
There's a big, huge thunderstorm coming this way, so we should leave.
We should leave, okay. Barry, anything else?
No, but it's, it's thunder in here. I'm in Walpole. It's, you guys should be hearing it in a second.
I should hear it.
We hear a roll of thunder, so that's the roll of it going.
Can hear it.
I move we adjourn this meeting.
Second.
All favor?
Hi.
Okay, it was nice seeing everybody, Ian.
Yes.
Good to see you.